All right, I will call the Bills Board meeting to order Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Randy Little.
Here.
Ryan Suzuki.
Here.
Kathy Scott.
Here, and you sound 100% better. I don't know what.
I'm on my phone.
Oh.
Aaron Big.
I'm here.
Pat Hill.
Here.
And Jessica Jackson is absent. Jason Frederick.
I know Jason. Did you answer, Jason?
I can't hear Jason.
Someone's got a motorcycle going by there else. And of course, Jessica had her baby, so congratulations to her. So she has a fantastic excuse for not being here tonight. Consent agenda, item two. Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
All right.
This is Ryan. Ryan will second.
Thank you so much. And for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any polls? Thank you. Item three, consider specific. I'm trying to read what you have there, Nick, and you're moving it out.
Do you not, Randy, do you not have an agenda?
No, I do. I have it on my phone.
Why do you use your phone rather than a computer or laptop?
No, no, I haven't. He was just moving the, the page around. Consider specific implementation plan for Gorman multifamily project. Nick?
Plan Commission reviewed this revised plan last, or last month, I guess it was. It was July, and are recommending approval. I believe we do have some people from Gorman on, and they can comment on any questions that we have. The one item that was recommended with approval was playing a wall to kind of screen a bike rack on the front of the building. Gorman asked if they could install a, like, head drill of boxwoods, and staff was comfortable with that plan. So that's the one change since the Plan Commission meeting.
I have a question. This is Kathy. I listened to the Planning Commission meeting, and I just want to know, currently, they have five years to install the sidewalk on West Garfield Street.
That's correct.
And, you know, sometimes these long-term goals just sort of change. Staff from their company changes, staff from our place can change. How are we going to monitor that so that it gets in within five years? What's the process for that?
We'll stick a calendar reminder out there and make sure multiple people have it on their agenda to follow up with them.
And Kathy, this is Ted Mattem from Gorman and Company. Hey, Wisconsin market president for Gorman. And the reason we asked for that, Kathy, was not necessarily because we don't think a sidewalk's a good idea. We have some budget issues with this. We're trying to fit it within the budget, and we thought that if we could delay that for five years, we could pay for it if the construction budget couldn't finance it. We could pay for it through cash flow over the next five years. But, but we plan, if we have the money in our contingency and we don't run into like a huge Armageddon kind of problem, we will put that in right away. So that's just a little bit of a, just a buffer for us that Nick was nice enough to give us a little leeway so we could have a, you know, be within our budget.
No, I appreciate you speaking up. And by the way, Nick is a nice guy.
He is a nice guy. So thank you.
Just remember my review's coming up next month as well, so.
Yeah, I got the email. We'll, we'll fill that out for you. Other questions or comments, please?
I watched the Plan Commission as well. I thought everybody asked really great questions. Aaron, I thought your idea to try to block the bike path a bit, or I'm sorry, the bike rack was a really great addition, so thank you for that. I heard one of the, one of the Plan Commission committee members was concerned a little bit about the overall look and how it fits into the, just the aesthetic of Mount Horeb in general. I, you know, I'm looking at these pictures and just studying it a bit. I actually like the way it looks. I think in the spirit of all the work that we've done with Mad Rep and wanting to bring millennials into Mount Horeb, this is the type of living that they're looking for. We need this type of housing in Mount Horeb. So just wanted to say, I think everybody did a really nice job of just thinking things over. This is a really great project and I'm really happy with, with how you've laid everything out here. So I'm very happy with what we've seen.
I really appreciate that. And just to, just to talk about the, the screen for the bike racks, I 100% appreciate that comment. Unfortunately, I could not make that final Plan Commission meeting, but when I heard that there was a wall that was in front of there, I just thought it was a little bit contrary to, not the look that we're trying to do, but like, I'd like to have a natural barrier. I think a barrier is definitely needed there, but just to build a wall seems like that's not what we're doing here. It would be better just for budget, too, you know, but just to have a natural wall there that would be like a boxwood thing, that would be a more natural barrier.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and we, we did talk about this quite a bit at Plan Commission, and I think the look of the building, I think what we, we ended up with is, is good. It looks modern. It's kind of in between residential and kind of commercial area, so I think it kind of blends in well.
I'm glad you guys like it because we worked, we worked pretty hard on it, and we delayed actually the approval of it so we could get it right.
Very good. Other questions?
This is Jason. I was just going to say, thank you very much for continuing to have faith in Mount Horeb and working on this project. The, the affordable housing marketplace rents has really been something that's been needed in this town for a long time. And it looks like not only are we, are we getting some, but we're also getting a very beautiful building, too. So thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Mount Horeb is a great market. We're extremely excited to be in here, and I, I would just be absolutely shocked if we were not full in this building after completion within 90 days. You know, 51 units, and I think there's a huge need. And, you know, there's always a stigma of these rural quote-unquote communities of, you know, not having the people to fill it. I guarantee you this will fill in 90 days.
Oh, I would agree. Definitely needed.
So, Brian, I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to this project, so I appreciate you coming forward. Visual-wise, you know, I don't know if I love it or not yet. Let's see what ends up and stuff, but I also know that we can everything, have everything look like some of the architecture on the east side of the village as well. So this is a different area, you know, there's different economics behind it. And, but yeah, looking forward to it. Definitely needed and hoping that this project works so well and that we have more like this coming in place down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate your comments. I, I think that the interesting hybrid architecturally of this building is industrial versus residential. And you're kind of trying to transition from that very historic residential look, which you guys have an awesome downtown, to kind of a little bit of the outskirts of downtown, which should be residential and industrial. And hopefully this hybrid kind of captures that feel, you know?
And that's kind of what we had talked about with Plan Commission. This is kind of, like you said, a hybrid, kind of a transition building, and I think it fits perfectly.
This is Beth. I'll make a motion to approve the implementation plan for the Gorman multifamily project.
Thank you, Beth. Is there a second?
Kathy, I'll second it.
Further discussion?
Just one question. Nick, do we need to amend that to address any additional notes such as that wall?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to make sure the wall's included in that. And I don't think there are.
Remise into the steps we got from.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the implement, implementation plan for the Gorman multifamily project with the addition of a natural wall barrier for the bike rack.
Thank you. Who's that?
Kathy, I'll second it.
Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any polls? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it. We're very excited.
Item four, consider rezon applications for born family trust. Item A, ordinance 202011, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of lots one and two, CSM 15165, Sudders Ridge, I'm sorry, Sudders Prairie Ridge subdivision from R2 to family residential to PD1 planned development. Nick, go ahead.
If you remember, we talked about the certified survey map that the applicant requested to split these lots up so each home was sitting on its own lot. In order to meet the setback requirements for that, the only way to do it was with rezoned to planned development. Developer believes that it will make it easier for resale so that these will be single-family homes. Kind of, it's a niche for entry homes in our market as well. Plan Commission recommends approval of the rezones.
Thank you. Discussion.
This is Ryan. I'm happy with the result of what we're doing. I wasn't a big fan of the process of how we got there. I think there were some concerns on my end from, you know, what the developer proposed versus what they had in mind on this. So again, you know, I'm happy to have more housing options within the end development. I look forward to tighten up communication in the future with, as these projects come, come forward.
Yeah, Ryan, I agree completely with you, and I think this is something that we can work to implement into our zoning code with our housing task force that's going to get started this fall.
I think, this is Kathy, and I talked to Nick about this. If I misquote you, Nick, tell me. I asked him how, how this got so confusing, because to me it was just sort of a cluster. And I, I think you told me that the building, the building permit guy, maybe he looked at the plans but never talked to the developer. They ship them in. Is that what you said?
Um, trying to remember. I, I don't know that they ever met. I know that they were sent in. I think with COVID, the interactions have been kind of limited. But I think the, the main issue came up because these developments meet our definition for a duplex because of that front shared footing, but they don't meet the zero lot line requirements for the certified survey map. So that's really where the confusion started, was trying to find a way to make it happen within the limitations of code.
Correct, but this should have all come up before this came up the way it did come up. I mean, I, I think the developer knew exactly what he was doing from the get-go because he's done this before, and somehow just built it as a duplex using a very unusual method, which actually is now that we like the method now that we came up with it. But I think there was a communication problem between the developer and the building guy. I mean, I, call it or not, I mean, I, I think they need to meet or have discussions, or he should have looked at the plan and saw that they, they sort of jet it out in a pie shape or something. And I'm sure it won't happen again, but I hope that, because this was a lot of work for a lot of different people. The developer, you know, and staff and all the, the committee, the Planning Commission having to go through all this. It was just a lot of time, which I don't think was all necessary. But I, I think I've driven by, and I think they look really nice.
So this is Aaron. Yeah, so technically it met the guidelines it needed to be even at the county level, county or, or, you know, municipal level as a duplex. Where it got tricky was, I think, actually, yeah, it was hard in this first round, but now we've evolved to have, I'll say, the sophistication to take a property like this or take a, the building structure like this and convert it to a zero lot line. And even the applicant's intent, the applicant's approach, and I believe actually intent was clean or clear, but what we had to be careful of is stopping future users, future owners from violating the intent later. So that's where we had to shore it up with regard to setbacks. And yeah, the first approach was the, the pod instead of the technical definition of zero lot line. I'm actually really excited about it.
Cool. Thanks for that, Aaron.
Further discussion?
Yeah, we found a resolution for it. I mean, that's good. So I appreciate the work that the Plan Commission has done, you know, go through this.
Yep.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve, approve the change.
All right, so we're at 4A approval. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
This is Darren. I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any polls? Thank you. So for B, ordinance 202012, and ordinance, I got to put my glasses on for heaven's sake. I'm reading off of my phone here. Ordinance 202012, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of lot 53 Trotter Glen, subdivision from R2 to family residential to PD1 planned development. Further discussion?
I move that we approve ordinance 20-12.
Thank you. Kathy, is there a second?
This is Jason. I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any polls? Thank you. All right. We'll move to item five, authorize staff to pursue raise order. Nick, I'll start with you.
Sure. There is a, a garage that we've received a number of complaints on, on South A Street in Maine. We had the building inspection department take a look at it. They prepared this condition assessment, determined that it is in very rough shape. We contacted the building owner. They just, the assessors, building inspectors just did like a sidewalk assessment, viewed the condition from the street. We sent a letter to the owner asking for permission to inspect the property physically, and he never responded to that. So what staff would like is the board to authorize us to pursue a raise order. We'll go get an order to raise it. We'll send that to the property owner. Then he'll have a certain amount of days to address it and tear it down. Otherwise, the village would have to do it and then bill that out to the property owner. But I think clearly, clearly this property needs some work, and starting with the garage would be, I think, a good step.
Well, and it does, and I see it every day because it's directly across the street from my property. We've also had violations for the lawn, which it needs to be cut again, by the way, Nick. It's just an eyesore. So Nick, when we do approve this, which I assume we will, does the company that's raising it, do they, do they take everything out of it? Because I know, I happen to know that there's things of somewhat value that could be taken out of it. Do they do that, or?
I would assume they would. I really don't know the details of that. That'd be something we would have to discuss with them.
Okay, and I, I've tried to talk to the property owner. He never answers his door and so on and so forth. And I will admit, I'm, I'm one that pushes this because literally I see it every single day, and you can see the pictures. I know all of you have driven by it. So I think it's just time that we need to, to take some action. It's unfortunate that we have to do it this way, but he's had his chance, and he's declined, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Kathy? Nick, you said that if, if we end up having it raised by professional people. Nick, you said that if we end up having it raised by professional people to do this, and then you'll bill the property owner, if the property owner does not pay, can we then put a lien on somehow, or, I mean, how, are we absolutely sure to get our money? Is there a formal way to get it, number one? And number two, could, is it worthwhile asking the fire department if they wanted to use that as a burn project?
If we have to pay someone to tear it down, and he does not pay that bill, it would go onto his tax bill, so one way or the other, it would come back to us. And I certainly think if we go that route, we could talk to the fire department, I'm not sure for a raise order like this, if that would be allowed, but maybe we can work something out with the property owner, if that's going to be less money for him, he'd probably be all for it. So I'm certainly willing to look for that option if we approve the raise order tonight.
Well, and the problem has been with this entire situation, including the lawn and snow shoveling, is the property owner doesn't respond, will not answer his door, so that's been a problem. But regardless, I think it's time, I know I've had a lot of complaints about the property since I live right here, and I just think it's time that we do something about it, I'm sorry it had to come this way, but it is what it is, so.
I'll make a motion to approve, authorize staff to pursue the raise order, this is Kathy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Ryan, I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
This is Jason, the only thing I was going to add is that this is a property that's pretty visible on one of the main areas in the community. I don't think anybody can be at fault for pursuing this, I think the only person that's at fault in this case is the property owner for the property going into the condition that it's in.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, we have a first and second, correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any votes? Thank you. We'll move to item six, consider charter ordinance 202001, a charter ordinance to amend chapter 1.01 elected officials of the municipal code of the Village of Mount Hora. Nick, go ahead.
We discussed this last month and had a couple of questions, so we took it back, did some amending, and we're back here tonight. The changes I made were with the transition from the, from the three-year to the, or two-year to the three-year terms. Talking with Brian Kleinemeyer, he thought it made sense that the candidates with the highest votes would get the longer terms, and the elected candidates with the less votes would get the shorter terms. So we wrote that in for 21 and 22, and then in 2023, everyone will be elected on a three-year term.
Thank you. Discussion?
Nick, those changes, they alleviate my concerns about the transition from last month, we've got a, we have a defined method of determining how to fill those spots now, which I don't think we had originally, so thank you for following up on that.
I have a question, and it has to do with the transition and making the president just be a two-year position as a minimum for the 2021 section, and then start everything, if you want, for 2023. I don't know how others feel about that.
So this is Ryan, I still have a strong opinion that the village president should be a two-year term, more accountable to the village residents. Again, as I said last month, nothing with the current president or past president, so on that, I just think it's important for that position to be more accountable, it's a three-year term. Usually that position is someone who is more familiar with the village itself, operations, and so some of the onboarding process and education of a trustee that we've had, and that issues, but you know, it does take a while, unless, Aaron, unless you know everything by now about being a trustee, so I'm still learning it as well. And so, my first is, I'm still going to be asking the board to look at making the president position remaining at a two-year term. Otherwise, I like the changes that were made and how the process, or, you know, the lowest total of that third person receives that.
Thanks, Ryan, I totally agree. Further discussion? With that, a motion, please?
This is Ryan, I will motion to approve the proposed ordinance to the chapter 101 elected officials with the adjustment of the president remains a two-year term.
All right, is there a second?
This is Kathy, go ahead, Kathy.
So Kathy seconded, I, all right, we're both Kathy seconding, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. Item seven, consider revised resolution 202011, a resolution creating the community development authority of the Village of Mount Hora. Go ahead, Nick.
Nick, you're on mute?
I sure am on mute, thank you. Another item from last month, we had the discussion on the village president being the chair of the committee, we just removed the language that required that, so it'd be up to the CDA to appoint the chair.
Correct, and I'm completely in favor of that.
I move that we, we accept resolution 2020-11, creating the community development authority of the Village of Mount Hora.
This is Jason, I'll second.
Thank you, Jason. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. We will then move to item eight, consider revisions to ordinance 20.05 regulating direct sellers and set public hearing for September 2nd, 2020. Nick?
I'll, we, I think a lot of you have received and probably even have your own complaints about the direct sellers this year, coming after hours and not wearing masks, that kind of thing. So Jason Fendrick took it upon himself to make some changes that he thought would be appropriate and acceptable to this body. We do need a public hearing for this, so that's why we have this set up for discussion, and then send the public here and rather than action, but I would turn it over to Jason for any comments he cares to make.
Yeah, I'll summarize what I was kind of thinking as I prepared these proposed changes to the ordinance. Like most of the people in town, I've received more salespeople at the house this year than normal. Both of the people that showed up at my house were outside of the allowable hours for direct sales. One was at 7:45 in the morning on a day that I was actually trying to go into the office. The other was 6:30 at night, as my family and I were just sitting down to dinner, and this person especially ticked me off because when I said, well, you're a salesperson selling this product, right? He says, oh no, I'm trying to set up an appointment for someone to come by and talk to you later. And I viewed that as a pretty feeble attempt to try to get around the current ordinance. I think I had an email out to Nick within 15 minutes of that exchange, asking him what could be done. So I said, well, it's time to look at the ordinance and break out my, break out my legal skills and see what I can come up with. So the first thing I did is I looked through the ordinance as it exists now, and I noticed there was several places where the terms weren't really consistent. So I tried to make a consistent terms throughout, so if you see a lot of places where the term firm, association, partnership, or corporation are blurred together, I tried to get it where it was the same phrasing throughout. Something else I noticed was that, the way the ordinance is currently written, section 7B3 is actually missing about two-thirds of its text. So I clarified with both Alyssa and Nick that, hey, is this, is this actually what this reads, or is something missing in the online copy? And we determined that there was quite possibly something that had been eliminated or cut out as it was converted to the online copy, but my understanding also was that the online copy is the canonical version of our ordinances, so I wanted to try to shore that up and get the language back in there. Luckily, our ordinance, in some regards, is very similar to some of our neighbors. It looks like at one point in time, the Verona direct sales ordinance and ours were probably, they probably had the same grandparent, I guess you would say, at some point in time. And luckily, this particular phrase was pretty much verbatim in theirs, the first section that we had in ours. So I will admit, one of the, one of the elements of statutory drafting is sometimes taking language right out of someone else's. So that language did come from Verona's, but I reasonably believe that's the language that was ours when it was originally drafted. I did have a pretty lengthy conversation with Alyssa on the phone, and in her role as clerk, to see how things are actually done with direct sellers. And I wanted to make sure that we were crafting the proper changes, I didn't want to, I didn't want to overload the gun, if you will, with changes that weren't necessarily fitting what we wanted to do or what we were seeing. In discussing with her how things operate in practice, I noticed there were some areas where the statute provides for one method, but how things work in practice might be a little different. For instance, right now, the way the, the way that the ordinance reads, it could almost be inferred that a person is registered once they file the paperwork, and the way that the practice actually works is that Alyssa doesn't register them until after they've cleared the screening by the police. So I wanted to make sure that that section was drafted to actually fit how it works in practice, so we didn't have a registrant that was demanding their registration upon payment of the fee. The next thing I wanted to do, as I had mentioned earlier, I wanted to close those loopholes where someone knocked on my door outside of the allowable hours and said, well, I'm not here to sell today, I'm here to have someone come talk to you and educate you about this product. Well, we all know what they're trying to do, they're trying to get in your house at a later point in time where you've now invited them in, they're no longer subject to the ordinance at all. So I wanted to get that shored up, where even if there's, even if the intention is to set up an appointment or some sort of follow-up visit, that's covered by the ordinance. Something else I noticed as I was looking at it, there was no explicit penalty in the ordinance for violation, so I did put in a section at the end for a penalty if a person were to be convicted of violating the ordinance. The classification I put in, I think, is a class three, that would be a $100 fine is the amount. And I also put it in there that each violation constitutes a separate offense, so if you've got somebody going door-to-door and doing this to 20 people, each of those 20 people could be a separate offense. And then finally, in talking with Alyssa, we determined that there might be a little bit of a problem right now with terminating someone's permit if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, and that is, the method of terminating now is that the village board has to initiate the termination and have, and hold a hearing. Other villages and cities in the area will allow their clerks to do that revocation with the right to appeal to the village board. And I think this is analogous to the situation where if you're denied registration at all, you've got the right to appeal to the village board. I think it makes sense that in this case, the clerk should also be the one who has the ability on the ground to revoke someone's permit quickly if there's repeated and flagrant violations of our, of our requirements, the clerk has the ability to revoke it on the ground, and then the person who has been revoked has the right to appeal to us. So I'm sorry, that wasn't very brief, I was actually surprised how long this ordinance was when I started looking at it, and then I'm not doing it any favors by adding more to it, but I think it, I think it addresses the concerns that I had as a citizen, it addresses some of the concerns that I had as a lawyer, and it also addressed some of the concerns that I had as a, as a village official after talking with Alyssa and Nick about this a little bit, and making sure that we get a, an ordinance that reflects how things are done, and gives the village officials the flexibility to move when movement needs to be done.
Thank you, Jason. Further discussion?
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
The first one's for Alyssa. Like I know, this recent roundabout, I had no solicitors, but I think you had said that there were five people from this one company? Does each person, is each person required to get a permit? Each of those five people from this one company?
Yeah, that's correct, each solicitor has to get a permit, it's not just the company. So we have six or seven in town for that solar company.
Okay, my second question is, I looked at other communities, and the two that I looked at were, well, actually three, McFarland, Middleton, and Milton. And, and from what I gather, there's a difference of opinion, there's a different definition, a direct seller is what you guys were experiencing, a solicitor is doing charitable organizations. In each of those towns, if you are a solicitor, so going on behalf of, you know, a church, and I liked how you added the school, Jason, I thought that was a great addition. I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if schools are charities or not, but I think it would make sense to have two separate applications, and the reason I say that is because the information needed is different, number one. Number two, the other communities do not charge anything for like the high school people or, you know, a church, but yet you know who it is, and it asks who's going to be doing it, and I think there's some control over that. Number two, the applications are, that comparing it with ours, you know, they're really pretty similar. Our fees are the lowest, and I don't know if we're supposed to be talking about fees, I think they should be higher. And number, another thing, McFarland, and I like their idea, is they have three options for fees, you can get a one-year license for a hundred bucks, a 30-day one for 40, and a seven-day for 20. As a minimum, I think a year is too long, I just think, these people go on waves, I would think. I know I have a yard, a wheat company that comes usually pretty late at night, they use kids about 8 o'clock at night, it's dark because it's winter time, and they're trying to get new business for wheat protection for your yard for next year. And, you know, I've learned more about direct sellers now because of this exercise, so that's good. And I don't think anyone has ever shown me their permit, ever. And have I ever asked? No, because I'm just angry they're interrupting me, but now that I'm educated, I'm going to remain more calm and of course, ask for it. But anyway, those are my comments, that to make the difference between a direct seller and a solicitor, or have two different applications, and consider changing it that we, from a year. Others, I think Milton has a year and their fee is 25, but McFarland has the, the options, as I said, and Middleton's is $50, and theirs is a year. So those are different options that we have. Middleton also has a wonderful brochure online that tells, I think in, in regular type of language, it has questions and answers, and I think it's a really nice piece, I mean, I think we could just throw that on there, rather than having to have someone read an ordinance, I mean, you know, just as a ready reference. So those are all my comments, and I'm through commenting. Unless you want me to talk more.
Well, the reason we need to delay this for a public hearing is because there is a fee associated, so if we want to change the fee, now would be the time to discuss that.
Oh, would be? Oh, good.
Yeah, and I deliberately did not address the fee in this ordinance, because this fee is not part of 1205, it's actually part of 1201. But I thought that would be something that we could leave to the board to discuss as well, because obviously, if you're changing the ordinance, I think the fee discussion can also reasonably be had as to what the, what the fee is. I did speak with Alyssa about the length of the fee, or the length of the permit, rather, and I can let her, you know, fill in some more details, but it's my understanding that there are several groups that they would be in town for longer than a 30-day permit, so they'd have to get a renewal. I kind of like your idea, Kathy, of having a set dollar amount for a year, or, you know, different amounts for different periods of time, I think that's reasonable. The, I think we want to make sure that the fee still remains somewhat, you know, somewhat reasonable for the cases of the seven or 30-day, because we still have to go through the work of having a background investigation done by the chief of police, and there's always going to be some manpower and time costs associated with that. So I think what we probably want to do is figure out what, you know, what we think, what we think the reasonable cost. think, what we think the reasonable cost is for that service, uh, versus the rest of it. And, you know, in all honesty, I think that, that twenty, forty, one hundred that you had mentioned, was that Milton that did that or where was that?
Farland.
McFarland, okay. Yeah, I think-
And they have not only, you know, for direct sellers, but they have a separate one for solicitor, and there, it's a one-year license for a solicitor, and in my mind, that would be both charities and the school.
Mm-hmm.
School people, and there's no fee. But yet you have to put your organization and also, uh, let me see.
So the only, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, and a list of all the names and addresses of the people that are doing that. So I think that's, I think that's good, you know, that they are listed.
Yeah, the, the only question that I would have about that, um, would be, would you, um, let's say for instance, you know, I know my, my son is in band, he was working to sell, um, items for the, the band trip to London that got postponed. Um, would, would the school have to have every, would the school have to register with every single student that may be selling something during the course of a year? Um, and I think that's why some other communities just have those groups completely exempted from the ordinance altogether. Um, for instance, you know, you had looked at several communities, I looked at, um, Verona, Oregon, and Stoughton to get some of my ideas. Um, so it looks like we've got a pretty good cross-section of Dane County, and as, as it sounds like, if, if anything, there's no, there's, if, if anything's consistent, there's no consistency across these ordinances, uh, throughout the county and the area. Um, but yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm not necessarily, you know, I don't think having a separate registration for a solicitor is necessarily, you know, a bad idea. The, the only question I would have is that, do we want to get into the business of, of registering that if they're already going to be exempt from the, the ordinance that, that we have currently?
Well, I, I think I didn't, I wasn't clear. The band, in your particular case, the band group, whoever, would, would fill out the solicitor registration so that the town and the police would be aware that kids are going to go around getting for band donations. The band people would then provide a list, they don't, these people don't need, so the band, your son would, would need a permit or anything like that, but he would be on the list, and in that case, I'm sure they have a list of who belongs to the band. I mean, even if some of the kids aren't going to be going out, he, they would just provide with, with the application, a list of the band kids. Um, so, you know, if, if your son, let's say he's not going to do it, but he's part of the band, he's on the list, and then if he would decide later to do it, it's okay because it's okay. Um, so-
This is Ryan. I'm more in the leaning towards just exempting those organizations. Um, I know it's nice to have, uh, some of the stuff, but at thi- this point, I don't think that's been a problem. I think just exempting some of the nonprofit organizations, um, especially local community groups, um, it just takes some of the burden off of, some administrative burden off of staff as well as, you know, these groups. That's my opinion on that particularly.
I would agree. Okay.
So just not having them even need to do a permit or anything, I mean, this, this includes Girl Scouts, selling Girl Scout cookies. Uh, you know, they, they can go door-to-door as, as they please. Um, this isn't somebody selling something like for a profit.
Right.
There's listening, whatever their organization is, and I think people are generally okay with that. Uh, I mean, you know, knocking on your door, I'm selling Girl Scout cookies, as opposed to I'm trying to sell you a term life insurance policy.
Right. I think like we get, um, I guess solicitors is the right word from like Wisconsin PBS, right? If you want to donate to PBS, I mean, I don't see a problem with that either. So I think anything that's nonprofit or Girl Scouts is a great example as well. Uh, yeah, I don't think they should have to go through this.
So, go ahead, Nick.
I was just gonna ask Jason, looking at his section, would that exempt high school students? It doesn't look like it covers local nonprofits, so.
Um, I think that would probably cover, that would be covered by the employee aide, officer or agent of a charitable organization. Um, wouldn't most nonprofits be considered charitable organizations?
That's in here?
Um, yeah, that's the section right below the high school. That's the current section I, new section J.
So it's currently exempt? We wouldn't have to change anything?
Yeah, that's the, that, that's the statute or the ordinance as it currently rests. Um, I don't want to, you know, have, have Girl Scout leaders, um, being asked why they're not registering their charitable organization. It's, it's a different situation from a, a group trying to sell multi-thousand-dollar improvements to your home.
So Jason, another example would be my daughter and some of her friends actually, uh, last spring, uh, they wanted to go door-to-door to get canned goods for the food pantry. I wouldn't think she would have to get some kind of a permit to do that because she's work, but she's not working even for the organization. They're just trying to do a nice thing. Um, so what would you think about that?
Um, well, in that case, it kind of fits in under the solicitation where you're not necessarily asking for a dollar amount, but you're asking for an in-kind donation.
Right.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think in that case, I mean, maybe we should, maybe we should carve out an exact exemption for that, but obviously I think that's something we wouldn't want to have someone be required to get, um, a direct seller's, uh, permit to do.
Right. So, go ahead.
Oh, I, I mean, I see this ordinance as protecting our citizens, um, from, um, both, you know, uh, hard seller, direct sellers or so on it. Um, so I'd rather see us protecting, you know, citizens from, uh, for-profit stuff like that than, um, focusing as much about some of these, um, you know, nonprofits or such that. And I think, you know, if we need to carve out the exemptions, we should. Um, part of, one of my questions is going to be is if legal is, uh, you know, our official, legal is taking a look at this or not, or if asset, with looking at recodification of our ordinances and evaluating, uh, fees, I know that's been discussed, uh, the villagers looking into, you know, revaluing fees, is that coming up in the near future where it'd be more appropriate to just, um, address, you know, the fees if it were looking at it later this year or so, rather than pull up the ordinance issue? Or would now be a good time to, uh, address that?
Yeah, as Ryan mentioned, we are working on a recodification and getting our fees put into a fee resolution so we can change them, uh, easier and it's more straightforward. So I think we could handle this at that time if everybody's comfortable with the fee for this permit.
I thought that we, with public hearing, we had to discuss fees. I, I really rather wait, rather do the fee now, and the reason I say that is because I happen to be working on the recodification, and I mean, uh, it's going to be quite a while, I mean, before this goes into place, and one of the things we're going to have is a whole appendix of all the fees for everything. And I, 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 I think we should do it now rather than wait for the fees. And if the board wants to change it back when we, when we accept all the fees, I mean, this could be, I don't know if Kathy's on, but I, she's running the show, but I mean, I'm, I'm thinking it might be March or April before we're through with what we're doing. It's quite cumbersome. Um, so I think we should, if you, if you said, Nick, we have the right to discuss the fee during the public hearing, I think we should do the fee now.
Well, I'll ask, you know, does anyone have recommendations of adjusting, was setting the, how would you recommend setting those? I'm open, I'm flexible, I don't have a preference on them.
I like McFarland's, twenty, forty, and a hundred. Seven-day, thirty-day, one-year. And if, if, um, you know, the solar people are running around all the time, well, then they're going to pay a hundred. And if it's some short-term group, say the wheat control people, you know, they might maybe come in for one month in the fall, you know, then they're going to pay forty. I mean, right now, they're paying, I think it's, we pay, I think it's twenty-five.
It's twenty.
Twenty, okay, it's even sicker than I thought. So I like the twenty, forty, a hundred. Seven, thirty, one hu- one year.
Nick, is that doable?
Yep.
Yes? Okay. I, I'd be okay with that. We could, like Kathy said, we can always change it if something, uh, uh, needs to be changed, but I, I'd be all right with that.
So, it is, is me as well. This is Ryan. Um, the other question I ask is, um, are there any, and you may not know this now, I'd be curious if it comes up before public hearing, if there's, are there any county or state ordinances or regulations that would supersede, um, anything that we can put in here? Um, I know this is a local control issue, and knowing that there's different items within, throughout Dane County, I'm assuming not, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not running to an issue that the state has said, you know, this has to be allowed, even though we don't want it.
Well, there are regulations that if you're getting into food, that can be a regulation and has to go through the health, Dane County Health. That would be in addition to all this stuff, but, I mean, so they, I, I believe I'm right on that, Alyssa, am I?
Go ahead, Alyssa.
There is no state statute that regulates direct sellers as far as soliciting. Yeah, and you're right, if it has to do with food, that's a whole different animal, but as far as what we're talking about, there is no state statute.
Okay, thank you.
So I would be in favor of Kathy's idea, and then Nick, if there's anything else that, uh, you find out before September second, obviously we can bring it right back forth. Uh, is that sounding all right, Nick?
Works for me.
Okay. Is there a motion?
This is Ryan. I'll set the, I'll motion, uh, set the public hearing on ordinance twenty-nine oh five, regulating direct sellers for September second, twenty twenty.
All right, do we need to add the, uh, the fees that Kathy suggested?
I think we have consensus to add that, so that will be added.
That'll be, that, yeah, that'll be at the public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, this is Jason. Um, I, I would second the motion as it stands, but, uh, along the lines of the fees, do we need to, do, do we need to have a motion to amend those fees as discussed as part of this motion as well?
No, we have a consensus on that, I feel, so we will add the appropriate language and bring that forward with the public hearing.
Okay. Um, this is Jason, I'll second the motion to set the ordinance for a public hearing.
All right. Thank you for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries.
Jason, I want, we're doing this, I'm in doing this.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jason, that was great.
Yeah, no, no problem. I, I do definitely, uh, encourage that maybe we do have this reviewed by, by legal, just to make sure that I didn't overstretch anything. Um, my legal background isn't necessarily in Wisconsin, so if there's any, but once you have, there's no state statutes that govern this and it's all local ordinance, I think the only thing we need to worry about is due process, which is covered under the, uh, the section where the right to appeal is present in the ordinance.
And I did review that with legal, Jason, and he was fine with that. So I think we're good.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Jason. Uh, item nine, village president's report. Um, I'm happy to see that over the weekend, uh, a lot of our sidewalk cafes have kind of cropped up. Uh, while we're taking away some parking spaces, which has been an issue in the past, I don't think the businesses are complaining now, uh, because we're able to open up and have some tables outside, uh, which is great. The alleyway is closed, uh, for another restaurant. Um, I, I think the little bit that we've done, uh, I, is going to help for cer- for certain, the, uh, restaurants that we have, so anything else we can, you know, if anyone else has any ideas on that, please let us know, but I think, um, I think it's going well. I, I've seen, uh, the tables full, uh, full, and, um, you know, again, I, I think that's a little bit we can do for the community. Uh, other than that, I have no other report. Uh, village administrator?
Uh, just a notice that Ed Moan had previously applied for a comprehensive plan amendment. Um, that was going to be a public hearing on September second meeting, he has since tabled that, uh, he had a change of plans with his property. And then, uh, just wanted to announce that three of our youth and government participants have graduated. Uh, congratulations to Levi Carr, Sarah Fritz, and Declan Smith.
Yes, thank you, good point.
Nick, I have a question. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, it's on Ed Moan. When we, um, regardless of it's him or anybody, when we have to put notices in on public hearings as we did, we had to put in two notices, is he billed for those?
He is billed for those, yes.
Okay, so he would be billed then for the one that we had to cancel it also?
Correct.
Okay, great, that's the answer I wanted, thank you.
Finally did something right.
No, did the lot right.
Thank you. Uh, village clerk, deputy, uh, deputy treasurer's report, we have an election coming up.
We do, coming up fast. So we've sent out just about sixteen hundred absentee ballots so far, um, for Election Day. We are going to have just one polling location again, which is going to be at the library. Um, the library is going to have no library services that day, it'll just be a polling location. Um, we have in-person absentee voting going on at the municipal building, um, on the second floor in the conference room, nine to three tomorrow, and then noon to five on Friday, and then that's done. Um, and then people can request their absentee ballot by mail still up through five o'clock tomorrow night. That's all I have.
And most importantly, what's the date?
Um, August eleventh is Election Day, next Tuesday.
Thank you. And who we, we have, uh, what on the ballot, couple primaries?
Um, we have assembly, um, court, or, um, county clerk, county register of deeds, county treasurer, um, and then there's one more, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but they're all county, county positions and states.
Okay. All right.
I don't think there's any opposition except for the, uh, what do you call it? The State House or whatever it is.
Assembly, yeah.
Correct.
All right. Uh, thank you, Alyssa, anything else?
Uh, no, that's it.
All right, perfect. Uh, item twelve, adjournment, do I have a motion? I'll motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.